Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Dr. Durkin, would you take the role, please?
Mr. John Olivera.
Here.
Mr. Chris Cotter.
Here.
Mr. Jack Livermento.
Here.
Mr. Bruce Olivera.
Here.
Mr. Josh Hamerall.
Here.
Ms. Colleen Duicki.
Here.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here. All right, good evening, everybody. So we are starting off tonight with a bittersweet occasion. So this marks the last school committee meeting that Lisa Dunaway will be presiding over. And it's great to see so many of Lisa's friends and family here tonight for the occasion. Lisa has certainly a special place in the hearts of the members of this committee. And, you know, we've, we know the Lisa Dunaway who provides exceptional, has over the course of her 31 years in the New Bedford Public Schools provided exceptional professional service in many capacities, but, you know, especially in the last few years with, you know, with all the activity, with all the movement in the school district, Lisa has been the glue in many respects in our district. And, but, and it goes far beyond her impeccable handwriting, which is the best handwriting I've ever seen. I have to get that, Lisa, I had to say it. And it goes beyond the fact that we share birthdays, too, Lisa. It is, Lisa's the kind of person that every school district ought to have, someone who has, maintains the highest professional standards, who builds strong relationships with folks inside the district and outside the district, is a loyal friend, and who is just a joy to be around in every, every respect. To say that, when you, when you decided to hang it up, Lisa, I was personally saddened by that, but I get it. Grandmother duties call, for sure, and that's, that's something special in its own right. But know that you will be missed by all of us here because you're just such a great friend and such an asset to our city, and in ways that I, that most of us would profess, you've made kids better off by your work in that, in countless numbers, and they who never know your name and never know what you did for them, but you've made it a better school district and therefore better for them in the long run. So I just, we've got a couple of things for you, but I wanted to say that right up front, and I'll open it up for other comments from our, my colleagues on the school committee.
I can't top that. I reiterate it, Lisa, the finest lady I've ever met, and I don't know how we're going to get by without you, but I think Beatty will do her best, but I just can't thank you enough. You've been a sounding board, and I've appreciated it, so thank you.
Josh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll echo the comments that were said before me. When you're a new school committee member, Lisa's one of the first people that you talk to. She provides you all the information, the contracts and the packets and everything, and also a feeling that, okay, I'll be able to figure this out because I've got a friend in the, in the office that's going to be able to help me. And there's been a number of things where I've called you and used you as kind of a sounding board to make sure that what I was thinking made sense or would even work, and you've been very helpful to me with that. We worked together on the policy manual review, which I thought was a big deal, and I had a lot of fun working with you on that. And I know that I'm going to miss you. I'm devastated, and we're going to do whatever we can to try to rope you back in. Thank you, Lisa, for everything.
Go ahead, Jack.
Lisa is that person of welcome. She's that face that says, "Come on in. I'm here to assist you in whatever manner that you need that assistance." And whenever, when I was elected to the school committee, it was an opportunity for me to really get to know her a little bit better because there were a lot of things that I needed to know, needed to learn, and she was able to provide that knowledge, to provide that path of obtaining that information. And whatever requests I came forward with, she was there to either find out where she, where she could find the answer, or whether she could provide that information that I needed. So Lisa, I'm going to miss you. It's been a part of the last four years that, that we've shared together. Maybe it's just an office visit, but at least it's a time that we've, you know, had the opportunity to have a little confidence in, in what you've been able to provide for the school committee. I thank you for your assistance. I thank you for your service. Continued good luck.
Thank you, Jack. Anybody else? Go ahead, Chris.
Lisa, there's really not much more that can, that I can say that hasn't been said already. I do want to wish you well in your retirement, if that's what you call what you're going into. The knowledge that you'll be taking away from your position is incredible. Beatty, you do certainly have big shoes to fill, but I do know that you're going to get there without any blips in the road. Lisa, I'm sure, has already given you as much information, and I know that you're going to have her number to call her at any given moment, knowing Lisa. You know, again, knowing that that voice is not going to be on the other end of the phone when I have those questions or I have any concerns, again, the knowledge that, that you have provided this committee is something that 30-plus years, it's, it's a lot. So, you know, on a personal level, I do thank you for, for your commitment to the city, commitment to the students of this city, commitment to numerous administrations in that administration office, as well as school committee members. So certainly, good luck. You're used to the non-traditional eight to four, which doesn't exist in your position and is not going to exist when you retire, so enjoy your freedom. And good luck.
All right. Go ahead, Jack.
Lisa, I'd just like to say thank you so very much. You are extremely welcoming person. When I came in, got me what I needed in some difficult times, but you represent what we most admire in the New Bedford Public Schools, and that's someone that's been, that's an asset to our community, and you have provided consistency that we need. Thank you very much for your time with the New Bedford Public Schools, and good luck to you.
Go ahead, Colin.
There's nothing else I can add. I've known you for a short time, but you have provided such a great welcome, and you've set a really high bar for, I think, what we can expect going forward. So thank you for just creating such a professional culture and a welcoming culture.
Well, so we have a couple of things for you. So if you want to come on up, this is in no particular order, but, so on behalf, come on down. Come on down. So I have a, I have a proclamation, we have something from, a couple of things from the school committee, but, so we have a, an official mayoral resolution, that's what I get to do. It says here that the City of New Bedford hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Lisa P. Dunaway in appreciation of 31 years of dedicated public service to the students of New Bedford Public Schools and the City of New Bedford. And the entire citizenry extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion, expresses the hope for continued good fortune signed on this day by me.
Thank you very much.
Wait, there's more, Lisa. So on behalf of the school committee, I'm wearing my other hat, so we have here, on behalf of, of everybody on the school committee, we have a clock that we hope you will display proudly in your home that marks the occasion, and so much so that Arthur's running up to take a photo of us with this clock.
History.
History in the making.
Those are the minutes that I don't mind looking at.
Those are the minutes. Yeah, yeah. There you go. All right. You leave it in my hands. I know you'll take much better care of it than I, so I'm just going to hand it over to you.
Thank you very much.
And then last, but not least, this is one we want you to open up from all of us because you are such a class act, Lisa. We want you to, we want you to figure we get a little, something a little extra for you mark the occasion. That's the front. Show the front. All right, city seal.
Very nice.
Show everybody the rest.
I have.
Lisa, say something here. You can sit in my chair.
Well, actually, I have something written.
Oh, all right, all right. Sit here.
I'm surprised, 31 years, I didn't know there were a lot to hire people at 10 years old.
Actually, I started with the city at 17, at the election office, but I did work consecutively.
Go ahead, you take this.
Oh, goodness.
She's got prepared comments. Go figure, Lisa's prepared.
They're not handwritten.
Mayor Mitchell, school committee, Dr. Durkin, administrative team. Thank you for your kind words and recognition for the years I have served New Bedford Public Schools. I want to thank my husband, Ken, my daughters, family, coworkers, past and present, and friends who have supported me through the years. I have been blessed with wonderful opportunities, starting at Ashley School, assisting three principals, one of which is right here, my friend Betty Tripp, wonderful teachers, enjoying the interactions with so many students and families, to assisting five superintendents and their teams, school committee members, principals, staff, parents, and community members. Each person, in their own way, has contributed to making this a very unique and special career. There are so many wonderful memories I will hold, continue to hold dear. I want to thank Dr. Durkin. You have valued my work, my input, and inspired me to grow professionally by encouraging me to take on leadership roles, mentor others, and trusted me with the air traffic control.
For sure.
I wish Beatty Ferrera, my coworker and friend, best wishes and good luck as she continues the work. I am pleased to know that I will be leaving the office in very capable hands. As I move on to enjoy retirement, I look forward to continuing to watch the results of the tremendous work that the administration and staff of New Bedford Public Schools has put into motion for the children of New Bedford. I have witnessed much hard work and dedication from all those I have had the pleasure to work with. Thank you for this recognition. I will miss you all. Thank you very much for all, everyone.
After that, Lisa, we all want to go home. All right, so we'll make this the best meeting ever, Lisa. All right, so let's, let's turn to item three of our agenda, which is far less interesting. It's the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes listed there, which are the special meeting of December 13, 2017, and the regular meeting of January 8, 2018?
No move.
Second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, did you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we take item 7D out of, out of order, please.
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
So 7D is the request from Simone Bouchard, CLAB facilitator, for approval to increase resident tuition from $385 to $390 for the 2018 CLAB session, and to operate the program from July 9 to August 17, 2018. Simone, come on up.
Good evening, Dr. Durkin, Ms. Dunaway, members of the esteemed New Bedford School Committee. And Lisa, I will miss our telephone conversations that usually begin with me saying, "Lisa, may I have your opinion on something, please?" So I thank you for all the years of service, and especially for giving out information that was viable and precise and to the point. Thank you. Yes, I have come to ask for a $5 raise in the resident tuition. We did not raise tuition last year for residents. We raised it $10 for non-residents. And the reasoning behind this request is that last year we began a pilot third grade that was only supposed to have 14 children, that ended up with 22, and it was very successful, and the children progressed, and we feel, after meeting with my evaluator, as well as some of the parents from the PTO, we feel that the pilot program, and this is after discussing with Dr. Durkin also, should be continued as a permanent place in CLAB. So in order to accommodate those children that began in the first level last year, which was grade three, that would mean that we add a new grade four. And in order to do that, that would mean we would be adding a new teacher, a paraprofessional, and an additional waterfront person, and an additional lifeguard in order to make sure that our third and fourth graders were supervised very, very closely when they did go to participate in marine-related fields. We would be adding 24 students to the new fourth grade and to the existing fourth grade, which would be a bump up of the third graders, perhaps another three students. So after going through or matriculating through the funding, we feel that we would probably, and most probably, have a positive of about between $500 and $700, adding a new fourth grade. So I need your approval to raise the $5 in tuition, to add an additional fourth grade, and to begin the dates of CLAB on July 9, which would free the parents and the students of the July 4 week, which falls on a Wednesday, which is right in the middle of the week. Are there any questions?
I'd like, just to make a motion that we grant the $5 increase and that the program run from July 9 through August 17, 2018.
Okay, you have a second? Any further questions? Simone, it sounds like you've answered all of them. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so we begin, of course, I've never finished, but we begin our 50th year that New Bedford Public Schools has...
Jimmy, can you call me at 2208? Jimmy, 2208?
That New Bedford Public Schools has supported the CLAB program for the children who live by the sea and for the sea. We're very proud of that, and along with that, this year, the United States government recognized the Naval Undersea Warfare Center, who for the past 12 years or so has been a contributor to the CLAB program. And the reason why they were recognized as first in the United States, its educational component, was due to the fact that they service so many New Bedford Public School children, from elementary to middle to high school. And so I'm proud and pleased to announce that Commander, the Educational Captain of the Educational Component of the Naval Reserve Base out of Newport will be our 50th Open House Speaker. So something to be proud of, and thank you, Arthur Motta, for the lovely little bit that you put on YouTube regarding the Navy. Thank you.
Great, all right. Thanks, Simone. All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Durkin, Superintendent's report, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mitchell. I'm going to ask Mr. Dolery and Dr. DeFalco and Ms. Emsley to please join me here. There are different parts of the preliminary budget as I move forward with it that will be explained and elaborated on each of them. The principal salary piece is, which is a piece of work that I committed between now and June, is incorporated into the actual document of the preliminary budget. I do want to thank the finance subcommittee members, Mr. Bruce Olivera and Mr. Josh Hamerall, for assisting us in making this clearer. And again, during the course of the presentation, I would ask that if there are questions, please do not hesitate to address them to the chair, and we'll be happy to answer them rather than wait to the end. So as we move forward on our preliminary FY19 budget, I do want to state, and Andrew has the dates to show this, we're about a month ahead of our regular presentation session. Given that, we are going to first look at what we're talking about when it comes to improvement and acceleration, and definitely what it means in terms of the state and local context. You can see, I'm going to have Andrew go through these elements, but our Chapter 70 funding has nowhere near compensated for what we need in our school districts throughout the Commonwealth. In fact, it has gotten lower in the last several years rather than increasing. I know you are aware that New Bedford Public Schools has nearly 84% of its budget coming from the state, so that Chapter 70 funding is critical in terms of what we're doing. I'd like Andrew to go through the, that, those bullets there, and particularly, I would pay notice to the school choice program, which Andrew has coined, if I can give him some credit for that, the silent charter. Those are dollars that are continually moving out of the district simply because other districts are seeing it as a revenue, a revenue increaser. So rather than have empty seats, let's offer 30, 40 of them to other school districts, of which there is a dollar amount through that. It used to be close to about $300,000. We now have 134 students going out of the district at a cost of approximately $835,000. So I'm going to ask Andrew to go through each one, and to please, again, ask questions as we go along.
Thank you, Dr. Durkin. As we previewed last month, school committee, these are the overall cost pressures. This is the state and local context. First place we start is what's Chapter 78 for, in the governor's budget, and we'll be monitoring that as it goes through the House process to resolution in the late spring. So overall, it's, it's a relatively modest Chapter 70 increase, and that will mean a relatively modest Chapter 70 increase for New Bedford, about 2.2%. It's well understood, at this point, two years out from the Foundation Budget Review Commission, that this is inadequate to meet the needs, especially in urban districts. Going beyond that, then, we look at what are the other cost pressures, or what are the other drains on our Chapter 70, and charter seat expansion is a significant drain. And the balance between charter, charter costs that we face, and then charter reimbursement, the state did, does kick in a modest amount of reimbursement, depending on where those students are in the charter cycle, 100% year one, and 25% for the subsequent five years. So all of that together gives us, over the years, about $2 million in charter reimbursement. However, FY19, that will be at $1.6 million. Very, very low charter reimbursement and very high charter school tuition. Overall, a net loss to the district of about $14 million. As Dr. Durkin outlined, school choice programming is beginning to grow in popularity in the towns, in virtual and online programs as well, and the district pays a minimum of $5,000 per student who opts for school choice, and there are add-ons to that as well for special education vocational costs as well, so we're forecasting that at over $1 million in F19. And that's extremely high percentage increase over the years, very high, much higher than the 2% we're seeing in Chapter 70. Transportation, we've been operating on a five-year transportation contract, so essentially we've been insulated from the market, and we've been operating on 2013, 14 rates, so the bid for transportation that we've worked on or releasing this month, we're forecasting somewhere in the region of $2 million cost increase there. And then we get into what we might know as the regular cost increases we see within our operating budget, such as special education, health insurance, and then certain special education services, we discussed last, budget workshops, autism services, and of course the outer district tuition as well. So when we look at the regular increases that might be met by a regular Chapter 78 increase, we also have the extraordinary increases as well. So overall, there's a lot to contend with, and a lot of downward pressure on our operating budget as we look into F19.
So we can see that our enrollment has remained steady. That is far above several other districts where enrollment is declining. This does not mean students are leaving in and out, but you can see there has been an uptick in grades six, seven, and eight, which we do believe is related to the middle school redesign, as well as the increased number of programming for accelerated learners, as well as for personalized learning. Andrew will go through what the Massachusetts total increase has been, as you can see, as we mentioned on the previous slide, 2%. For New Bedford, that is meant about 4.18%, however, when you look at it together, it's close to 4%. Andrew?
So enrollment is the lifeblood of state funding, and enrollment in certain categories economically disadvantaged in ELL can mean an increase for districts like New Bedford over the regular 2% increase that the state, state is coming statewide. So you can see on the, on the right, the box in the bottom right, you can see our Chapter 78 is increasing in the governor's budget almost 4%, 3.94%.
Looking at what our dollars pay for, it is important for this committee, new members, as well as members who have been on the committee, is the major milestones that have been reached by this school district. The release from the district, from DSC monitoring, happened in August. What that's going to look like in the future remains to be seen in terms of how...
Can you just pause one for one second? Mr. Livermento had a follow-up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, where are the extra students coming from? Do you have an increase, say, in, you know, for middle school of 153 students? Where are those students coming from?
New entrance, as well as students coming back from, I'm sorry?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade? Yeah, sixth grade is the largest bump, but they're coming from other places within the state. Or they could be coming from foreign countries, our increase in, in students from outside foreign countries.
Another question.
Just going back real quick to the school choice program, at what grade level are we seeing the school choice go to other districts? Is it all over? Is it primarily high school?
It is. It's, it's all over. We, we did an analysis in the spring and sent that to the committee, and we did another analysis recently and sent that as well, and we can monitor, again, as we get, as we get clearer figures in F19 from the state, but it runs the entire gambit from K to 20.
And what, what, what number of students are we talking about?
One, right now, it's forecast at 160.
Okay.
Currently, 134.
Right, thank you.
One quick, one quick clarification, if we could?
Certainly.
Jason, you mentioned the 153 increase is primarily sixth grade?
Yes. Not only sixth grade, but primarily, yes.
Is there, can I just, when you, when you get a chance, obviously you're not going to have it now, but can I just get a breakdown of what, where we're seeing the biggest, I mean, obviously, sixth grade, but I'm just curious on what the increase is in six and seven, sorry, seven and eight?
Absolutely, you can do that.
Thank you.
Just a quick one, this is more than a, than a question, but you touched on the state and local context, Andrew. I just want to reiterate, the Foundation Budget Review Commission found that the state underfunds education by $1 to $2 billion, and that means about $30 million for New Bedford, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less, but in that ballpark. And so far, it's been two years with very little action taken, but in the last few weeks, there was some movement where the House Joint, the Joint Education Committee, between the House and the Senate in Massachusetts, voted out a bill. It was Senator Chang Diaz's bill, which starts to implement some of the solutions to that problem. That still has to go to the Ways and Means Committee to actually be funded, and that's where the problem is, because we don't have the money. But there's some movement on that, but I just want to kick off the budget cycle by mentioning, you know, how inequitable and unfair the system is. It's, it's pretty bad that cities like New Bedford don't get what they need from the state, so just saying that. Thank you.
Could we have, yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Hamerall was, was indicating, there's actually a bill that's before the, that's going to be hopefully approved by, I think, the justices, mainly in terms of increasing the tax on those persons who earn over $1 million, and the funds from that would come to this, would be, is mainly directed toward education and transportation. So my hope is that it'll get, number one, approved, to get on the ballot, and that'll be approved in the fall, once it does make it to the ballot.
So I have a couple of questions. One of them picks up on Mr. Cotter's comment. If you could provide the committee with as granular of an analysis of where kids are coming from and where they're going, that would be useful to this committee. I think we really need to understand that, including incoming kids who are choosing New Bedford, right, so speaking specifically now about Acushnet, which, whose enrollment at the high school has dropped off considerably over the last couple of years, but last few years. But these are things that are really important for, for financial and other reasons, and we really need to have a, have a handle on that. years. But these are things that are really important for, for financial and other reasons, and we really need to have a, have a handle on that. And I think there's also, there's probably a broader discussion on this, but we'd like to also know trends concerning students who are enrolling in New Bedford Volk as well. That's a, you know, it's all, this is all of a piece. Yeah, I think that was the primary thing I had to ask. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add, add to that? It would be great if we could get some information, if, if we know why these children or their parents are having them go a different route than within the district schools. So those that leave, do we, do we know why? And I think that's more at the issue.
Yeah, no doubt. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So I was going through the district accountability very briefly. The release from monitoring, the movement to schools out of the lowest percentile rank, the addition of four schools to the highest percentile rank, and I do want to forecast for this committee that Dr. DeFalco and I will be giving a preview of the new accountability system, which will not be in place until August, but it will, it is planned to be passed by the Board of Education in Malden in March. It will be important for this committee to understand that the new accountability system will be looking at very different, not very different, but a very different designation system than what has existed. So though we have had levels one through five, there still will be a much higher bar when we look at schools that are meeting expectations, not meeting expectations, those that are chronically underperforming, and those that are under state receivership. It will be important for this committee to understand that, because we are going to see a shift in where our schools have currently been, whether it be at level two or three, and where they most currently will reside in, under the new system. After that is approved by the Board, I believe we're planning that for April, so we can at least give a thumbnail sketch of what that looks like. Our NEASC accreditation was strongly endorsed by NEASC for our high school, and advanced placement continues to rise, and I want to remind the committee that that is a sign of strong health for a high school, because it is open access, and it also involves teachers developing their skill set that students are moving to the highest levels of achievement. And last but not least, one of our proudest accomplishments was the middle school redesign plans, which have been written from the ground up by our teachers with administration, so that we are able to develop a reform plan of one of which we are mastering, as opposed to being told what to do with that. And we will have an update on the middle school plans, I believe, in March. Am I correct, Dr. DeFalco?
That's right.
Okay, with along how the Summit Personalized Learning Program is working. So when we look at district improvement, we've got a lot that needs to happen. Number one, our middle school redesign plan has called for an increase in technology, of which Mr. Tatro and his staff has very ably put in place for all three middle schools, and we have definitely increased with that. We have extensive professional development during the school day, having listened to staff, that having that professional development after school can be very cumbersome, after having worked six, seven hours with students. In fact, we do that every, every month for a Wednesday, and this coming Wednesday is our next one, in which staff, students are released early, and staff is able to work between one and, I believe, three-thirty to be able to move through their improvement plans and working as teams, which is very powerful. As I mentioned, we are planning an expansion of the personalized learning and the dual language initiative at GOMES, which we will be reporting on in, within the next couple of months. The training for that takes place, I believe, in February, when the team from GOMES will be visiting other like schools across the state. We have specific school improvement initiatives that have been funded with a lot of hard work, working with the DESE at Keith, at Roosevelt, Lincoln, DeVal's, and Hathaway. They involve not only social-emotional learning, developing writing skills to the extent of good elaborative concepts for our students to learn, because writing is the highest form of communication, even above reading, and how the learning cycle can really focus on rigorous learning. We were able to procure a DESE grant for sixty thousand dollars to assess our social-emotional learning framework, of which Dr. DeFalco and I will be giving a very brief preview tonight. The report is over sixty pages. We had made the decision that we will give excerpts of it tonight, but would welcome going over that report in full at possibly one of the subcommittee meetings, and that will be up to the committee in terms of that, most likely Curriculum Subcommittee or another committee meeting that you feel would be helpful for that. And last but not least, we have many capital improvement investments, and as we are looking on the docket, very, very new and coming up very fast is Brooks, Parker, and New Bedford High School. So those are some of the district improvement pieces that are on the rise with more to come. And in building the FY nineteen budget, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew. This is exactly the sheet that comes from-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could I just jump in for a second?
Yeah, sorry.
Sure.
Yeah, I would love to hear more about the, the grant from DESE and how that works at a subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so the full report. We're going to give a short one tonight, but we will absolutely be happy to do that.
That's fine. I'd also, at some point, I'd be happy to hear more about the dual language initiative at GOMES.
Yes, yes.
If you can put that on-
Yeah, where, I think we have that on for-
It's in the spread.
It's March, it's February or Mar-, no, it's not February. Today's February. It's March or April, okay?
Okay.
Yes, that is one of the, the pieces, and we would like the team that is working on that, which comprises of teachers, Mr. Livermento sits on that team, some parents, to come back and report on that. But absolutely, yes. Okay, so now we're up to net school spending. You can see that, if you just look between FY eighteen and nineteen, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew, because this is his very strong suit in describing this. You can see our, our state allocation has declined somewhat, from eighty-three five-nine to eighty-three point four-two. It is important to recognize that we are still not meeting net school spending. As try as we, we do, there is still a shortfall, and it is the minimum requirement for what we have to, what we need to do. Though it has improved, and we're narrowing that gap between what we should be spending and what we are spending, it is still not narrowing to the fullest extent and closing. So Andrew, if you could go over this, please.
Yes, so there's a lot of information here, and this is a crucial document from the fiscal side of things. Two, two figures to focus on would be the one hundred and forty-three million figure in the FY nineteen column. That is our Chapter 78 proposed in the Governor's Budget, as we saw, one hundred and forty-three million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty. Now, below that is a figure of one hundred and seventy-one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. That is the foundation or required net school spending figure. That's the figure that the city of New Bedford must demonstrate it spends on its schools in FY nineteen. So that's what the term net school spending means, is the state determines for every community what it should spend on its schools under ed reform, and you either meet or don't meet, or you exceed net school spending. So the city in F-19 must demonstrate expenditures of one hundred and seventy-one million, and to assist doing that, the state gives one hundred and forty-three million in Chapter 78. And so overall, that's an increase of four percent. And then from this process, the, my office works with the city CFO office to review healthcare charges, pension charges, et cetera, and then come up with an operating budget figure that will allow the city to meet its net school spending obligation. So that's where we get our operating budget. We start with the larger figure, which is net school spending. We look at the Chapter 78 figure. We look at what the city covers for the schools, mainly healthcare and several other items, and its charter obligations, et cetera, and once that's deducted, we'll get to the figure that you'll become most familiar with, which is our operating budget, which is ultimately what this committee will vote on, which will be somewhere in the region of the one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty million.
Does any of this include any forecasted funds that will be coming from the Commonwealth, from the feds, for students that are coming in from Puerto Rico?
So that's, that's a good question. The quick answer is no, but there's, there's more to that, in that the state has said that in F-18 and F-19, they're going to propose in F-18, and they are going to budget in F-19 supplemental funds for refugee students from Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. And so I think this week, in the legislature, there was a supplemental submitted for that purpose, and it's also in this budget. But they're keeping it off the Chapter 70 for all oster reasons, including net school spending in F-20, they're keeping it off the Chapter 70 track, and it will be a separate item that we will apply for. So potential, there is potential funds there.
Is that directed funds, where we, are we told where that money needs to be spent? I mean, obviously, I would think that would go to ELL teachers for those students.
Yeah, that's to be determined, whether they put restrictions. So supplemental funding in grants or other forms does come with requirements that you, again, have to spend it on this, or you can't supplant that, but we'll wait and see in the spring if that's the case.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide? Because this is a rather important slide that at least foundation for the rest of the discussion fiscally.
Yeah, I've got one.
Required district contribution, is that basically the difference between the Foundation
Budget and Chapter 70?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a number that is backed into.
Correct.
Thanks.
So when we look at the administrative cost agreement, which has grown in its sophistication in the last five years, Andrew can explain this chart and what the numbers, what the the black marks mean, and the diamonds, and through all that. It's fairly self-explanatory.
So that, that larger figure, the one hundred and seventy-one million, that represents the net school spending figure that the city much, must reach. And then every year, the state assesses how the city has done in the previous year in meeting that net school spending. And so you'll see talk about that in, in communities and cities statewide. Have you met? Are you below, or are you above, net school spending? Well, that's what this chart shows. The PowerPoint doesn't do it justice, but you can see there's a, a black line at the very top, and the city would want to reach or exceed that black line. So where, where you see, and there are other DESI charts that we can show later in the budget process as well, that show if you're a percentage below, or two percentage below, or half a percentage point below net school spending, or if you're meeting net school spending. So there's a very important back and forth with the city CFO office and my office in determining how we report our costs to DESI, how we calculate what's called an administrative cost agreement, which says the schools spend this much for this purpose, and the city spends this much for school-related purposes. We'll include all that in the DESI end-of-year report, and that will demonstrate that the city is or is not meeting its net school spending obligation.
So our cost centers are many, and you can see that they not only involve schools, but they also involve the central office departments. During the course of the budget workshops, which we have proposed meetings at the end of this presentation, we will be going through those cost centers, and there will be a particular format that Andrew and the principals, as well as the central office managers, have implemented. Part of that is really looking at level service, which means everything we have now, and it costs more, so our level service budget, though it has increased, does not mean an increase in services for what we need for the children in New Bedford. And the word enhancements are all those additional things that principals, cost center managers are looking for to increase their capacity in being able to serve the children in New Bedford. Andrew, do you want to describe that this format will be, will be available to the school committee members, and if we do go with the February twenty-sixth proposed meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, those materials will be delivered to you probably the end of next week, right before the break concludes? Because as you know, school is out next week. But we will have those available to you in time, so that with the, the February twenty-sixth meeting, if that is the prerogative of the school committee, it will be available to be able to discuss. But I'd like Andrew to go through what format that will take place. It will have all the schools, as well as all the cost centers that are on that, on this previous page. Okay?
So, correct. This is a preview of what the committee will receive to inform you ahead of the budget, the first budget, and subsequent budget workshops. So what we do is, since, since the fall, work with all the cost centers and their various staff to basically input their budget, their budgets into the system. It's a rather large, almost like a coding effort, to get everything into the system appropriately, cross-check, double-check, and, and clean it, and then the actual work of ensuring that level service budget is in place. What will it take, what will it take to ensure the same level of service next year? And then to look at enhancements. What are the cost center managers, be they a program director, be they a principal, or a principal and his or her team? What do they need for next year? What have they noticed in this year and previous years? And if additional funds are available, or if additional savings can be found, what would they wish to add to enhance their budget? And this is entered into the larger MUNIS system, so we've seen in the past large binders with every account, and that is still available, that everything is in the MUNIS system at this point, and so you can drill down, right down to the code strings. Of course, that's somewhat cumbersome, so the cost center managers have, and will be delivering to the committee ahead of the first budget workshop, this format here, where you see a summary of the department, where you'll see a summary of their budget last year, their level service budget this year, and then the enhancements broken out, and other narrative information from the cost center manager describing why they have those enhancements. And that should, should give a, a strong body of information to the committee as we begin the workshop process.
Any questions on the material that you will be receiving?
You, you mentioned, you know, these cost centers asking for what they need. Who, who is ultimately responsible for cutting costs where necessary? Is that at the cost center? Or is that, I mean, obviously, we need to cut costs. I mean, this is the taxpayers' money we're talking about here. So who is responsible for looking at the budget and cutting costs that may, or may not be, that may not be necessary?
It's ultimately a joint, a joint effort. There's no, like, set red line authority per se, or at least that hasn't been part of the process, but it's been through the workshop process. So one or two committee members might propose, I think we should take this item and swap it out for that item, or going through the process, might ask my office to analyze the costs here and reduce them based on a projection, say utilities won't really be that much because you've saved so much this year, or it should be put in salary saving. So that's really what the workshop process is for, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that page?
So I just want to be sure the committee understands, they will be receiving this probably the end of next week in preparation, if the committee agrees, to the first workshop meeting, which would be February twenty-sixth, two weeks from tonight. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. So what are we investing in the future? One of the most important things that we have, I wanted to undertake before June, was looking at principal salaries, and particularly with surrounding districts. And what we have done, Ms. Emslie is going to go through that. I want to be clear that part of the difficulty with principal salaries, and Ms. Emslie will focus on this, is when I entered New Bedford five years ago, principals had not been given increases for approximately five to six years. Since I have been superintendent, we have tried to catch up, based on performance, based on the number of students, but more importantly, the number of staff that they supervise. So you may have two schools that have two hundred and fifty students each. However, one school has a very large special education population that also has an additional fifteen to seventeen pairs that you're supervising. So the kind of process that we've worked through has really looked at not only the number of students, the intensity of those needs, but also looking at the number of staff that that staff, that that staff require, those students require. So we're going to go through that in a minute. The other part is we have talked about Chapter 74. And to have Chapter 74 go forward and develop more career technical education programs, we need a manager of career and technical education. We are proposing-
Dr. Durkin, just for everybody's benefit, Chapter 74 refers to the state vocational ed program.
Yes, and Andrew, if you could just explain the number of regulations that involves, and why this position would be important?
Absolutely. So we've talked at previous committee meetings about Chapter 74, and within the district, we've done a lot of work at New Bedford High in attempting to resurrect or maintain what are called Perkins programs, which are non-Chapter 74. So there's certainly the potential, an architecture there that can be built on to build Chapter 74 programs. However, the bar is pretty high. The vocational schools and vocational programs have developed a very sophisticated programming model over the past few years, so the bar for Chapter 74 is very high. It's also very expensive, so, and the regulations for Chapter 74 and the reviews are, you know, about five inches thick. So this position would be crucial, to be a leader within New Bedford High School, to restore that culture, to understand the codes, understand the regulations, understand the DESI auditing, and to just build quality programs. We're confident that, once you build quality programs, the programming will follow.
But it's, it's not as simple to say, we want a Chapter 74 program, and I think the committee understands this, without having someone delve deeply into the quality of that program, so it absolutely passes the muster when it comes to DESE approval, as well as making sure the program is doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Yeah. You have a question. Dr. Durkin on that, go ahead, Judge.
Just as a, a comment, I, I've talked a lot about adding a, a program like that in vocational education at, at the high school to the extent that we can, and I think a position like that is, is essential, basically for the reasons you said, Andrew. If we want to get into the business of offering that training, and I, I think we should, because I think it's important to the, the students at New Bedford High School and in New Bedford in general, we have to do it the right way. We have to offer quality programs. We can't just say, you know, we're going to, we're going to get into, into vocational education, so, you know, start a program up. I don't think that'll work, and I think really the, the best way to, to do it is for it to be a sustainable program, and preferably one that, that, you know, grows and builds on itself. So I think the only way to do that is to have somebody- So, I think the only way to do that is to have somebody that oversees that process. I don't think it can be just a sidecar to what we do normally. I think it's going to be integrated. So, I appreciate that.
And we've estimated this position to be approximately $100,000. In maintenance of facilities, we'll get into that more in depth.
One second.
Question about that. Could you repeat the salary that you were estimating?
$100,000.
Okay. And the additional costs of this position? In addition to salary?
Is that all compensation?
That's the compensation. I mean, there's obviously benefits, and through that, that would be worked on, but-
No secretarial staff?
I, we have not, no.
See, that's something we obviously need to look at before I think we commit to something like this. And, I mean, I'm all for what Josh was talking about with the career and technical education at the high school. However, we need to look at the cost factor. And just saying $100,000 is what it's going to cost is probably lowballing the whole thing. The taxpayer deserves to know how much this is going to cost. And, to be honest with you, I haven't even seen a rough plan. So, it's kind of hard to make an investment at a minimum of $100,000 when you don't even have a plan going forward. You want to hire somebody to make a plan. So, I think we need to, we need to look at that.
There's been some planning done, as I understand. I haven't seen it, but you could share with the committee.
Yeah, we've been extremely active over the past five years, I would say. We have an education industry coordinating committee, and the Perkins program, and a committee with industry representatives. And actually, we had a vote of that committee in December that asked us to bring forward this recommendation for that position at New Bedford High.
Yep. Go ahead, Chris.
I have to agree that, you know, we do definitely need a position to oversee the building of this program. And I know that I've mentioned it quite often, you know, not just as a school committee member, but prior to becoming a school committee member, that these programs are what's going to get those kids who are on the cusp of staying in school or leaving school, to give them that little bite at something that's going to interest them. So, you know, I do look forward to hearing more about it. I think that, you know, obviously, before we hire that position, you know, we do need to discuss a little bit more in depth on where we stand. But I'm definitely very interested in hearing more about where we are getting that program, you know, up to fruition.
Okay. Matt, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, I think it's something that will ultimately be necessary. But if, not to go too far ahead in the presentation, but I think it's page 18 that has all the, all the things that are probably essential, that aren't going to make it into our budget this year. It's very possible that these things don't get funded. So, I don't think we're making any decisions tonight on any of this. But I think it's a good time to mention the idea, and we'll get further information before we make any decision.
That's exactly, that was exactly the reason why we wanted to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think, I think, I hope ultimately that gets in there. I hope a lot of things get in the budget that ultimately won't. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just a little important, in terms of vocational education.
I think we at New Bedford High School really need to offer that opportunity for a number of students who are going to vocational, who really should be at New Bedford High. And my input there is mainly in the sense that there are a number of students who apply to vocational. However, there are a number of students who are denied that opportunity of going to vocational because those slots have been taken up by students who really should be at New Bedford High. And we, and if we have some vocational education at high, at New Bedford High School, I think it gives those students who did not have the opportunity of getting into voc, to really continue their education and to utilize those skills in that area for the better.
Yeah. So, I know we have a lot of stuff to move through, but I think there's a general sense of the committee that this is something that we should be looking at. I don't think anybody's contemplating converting New Bedford High School into the city's second vocational school. That's not what's in the works here, but I think, and most of us see this as a way of rounding out some of the programs at the high school and complementing what's, what's there already. All right, Andrew, go ahead.
The last bullet goes into the maintenance of facilities, in terms of really looking at both deferred and preventative. Just to elaborate a little bit more, since it was great interest on chapter 74, I'm going to ask Andrew to go through what that would mean. Many of you have addressed these issues already, but we need to really look at what quality programming will be at this level, and what, how it will be driven to that level of quality, that it will be accepted and embraced by staff, as well as families and students.
What you see here are basically the principles of career tech education, and it would be the role of the career tech ed manager to take on some of these tasks. And again, build that culture, or restore that culture within New Bedford High School. Also important to point out that there is a funding side to this as well. We do receive Perkins non-chapter 74 funding of about $100,000 a year, and that requires a lot of, a lot of paperwork, a lot of response, a lot of program improvement at the high school as well. And this would fall within that person's role as well to maintain that. And so, again, as the person, as chapter 74 approval is reached for programs, the base rate, which is about $9,000 for a chapter 70 high school student, the base rate for a chapter 74 student is about $16,000 as well. So, you do have, it certainly meets the standard of an investment, I would say.
Yeah. Okay.
So, the next two slides, I'm going to ask Ms. Emsley to go through. As you well know, I started saying that principals had not gotten salary increases for approximately five years prior to 2013. Ms. Emsley has done a very comprehensive job of looking at salaries across the state, where New Bedford is currently, and what our proposal is to be able to bring some sense of parity and fairness to the principals that are currently in employment in New Bedford. So, I'm going to ask Heather if you wouldn't mind taking this over.
That's correct. As Dr. Durkin stated, we wanted to ensure that our principal salaries, take a look at the surrounding districts and districts throughout the state, to ensure that our compensation packages were competitive, to both attract and retain our principal staff. As an example, we looked at surrounding communities such as the Kushdah, Dartmouth, Fall River. We also relied heavily with MASC, has a very comprehensive report on principal salaries. And what we'll find, and you'll see on the slide, is the state average at the elementary school level is $107,682. When we look at New Bedford principal salaries for the current school year, we have 10 principals that fall under $100,000, six that fall under $95,000. What we are proposing at the elementary level is that we have a minimum salary at $98,000. But again, the exact salary, as Dr. Durkin had spoken to before, would be based on the number of students, number of staff, special populations that are housed at a school. Every school is very unique. At the middle and the high school level for principalships, again, using the same comparisons, we found the state average was $112,000. We have three principals that are all currently under $110,000. We're looking this year to bring up the minimum salary to $106,000, again, based on student number, staff number, special populations that are housed at the school. And the high school headmaster, which is a unique position, not every district that was surveyed has a headmaster. So, some of them are much smaller high schools, they don't service over 2,000 students, so they have just a principal structure in place. So, we look at headmasters, the average is about $127,000. We're currently under $125. We want to have a minimum salary of $125.
Yeah. So, I have a couple of comments. I'll do more talking, because it sounds like you should rest a little bit. Yeah, I mean, we appreciate this work. I think we probably need to see a little more detail. I mean, you could, as you think about it. So, I start with a general proposition, that our salaries should be very competitive, right? Because we, the work is hard here, there's a higher degree of difficulty than most places, we acknowledge. And so, we do need to retain and attract talent, for sure. You know, how a salary at a particular school is set can depend on some of the variables that you mentioned, the size of the school, obviously, the size of the staff. The size of the staff can be, can cut both ways, right? So, if you're, let's say, a middle school principal, and you have three assistants, your job is probably easier than all else, being equal, the same middle school with only one assistant principal, right?
We've looked at that as well.
Yeah. So, the other thing I'll just throw out there for food for thought is that statewide averages can be a little misleading. After all, you know, most of the schools in the state are in greater Boston, which has one of the highest costs of living of any metro area in America, right? We're in a different place here in southeastern Mass. So, I mean, these, all these things have to be-
Mayor Mitchell, we didn't include Boston. We only included areas surrounding this area.
All right. Because there's statewide, there's state averages listed.
Well-
So, we use MASC data, which would be a state average. They would, they would have some districts, for example, Brockton, which is an urban, Worcester, which is an urban, Abington, which is an odd urban.
Well, I assume, yeah, but the, generally speaking, we're, you know, what people earn in this area, in this part of the state, is less than their peers in other parts, both in the private sector and the public sector.
Yes. So, and I reached out specifically for, you know, Fall River, Kushdah, Dartmouth, Fairhaven, specifically for that reason. I wanted to make sure we had some true local dollars.
The other question I have is, what, like, I appreciate you bringing this to us, but what barrier is there to you in setting the salaries anyway? I mean, you do this by contract, and so-
Yeah, exactly. There is none. What, why we're bringing it is because it is becoming a very critical issue, in terms of exactly the things that you stated, to attract, retain. We put a huge, huge investment in our principals. They would say that to you. And to then take that training and go elsewhere. It is the work of a principal in New Bedford Public Schools. I stand by the ones who are here, and they're, that they are doing the work, and they are continual learners to be able to manage that. To be able to bring this to parity would cost at approximately about $49,000. Am I correct, Heather? Now, what is not included in here are the two alternative principal settings. They're different. They have challenging students, they're smaller in number. We need to do a survey in those areas, which is Wailing City and Trinity. Not to demean their work, but that is not included as into the typical part of it. So, Heather?
No, Dr. Durkin summarized that well. The goal of bringing this to the committee was, certainly, we had spoke about this several months ago, where we talked about what we're doing to make sure we address issues of retention in the district for principals. This is a strong step forward to that, and we wanted to make sure the committee had an update, not only what we had done, how we made the decisions, and frankly, what the impact would be at the budget.
Yeah. I think this falls into the general category of things that the school committee should know about, but not micromanage, because there is, there are, there is a fine calibration that has to take place when we're setting these salaries, because of all these variables that we've talked about. I mean, it makes sense at some point, not tonight, but at some point, for the school committee to offer its sense of what's appropriate in general. That is to say, you know, we want to be seen as, you know, competitive, the most competitive in southeastern Mass, or what, greater New Bedford, whatever, however we define it. So, you have the guidance you need to-
Yeah, and the purpose of this was to let the committee know the disparities that do exist, based on fairly scientific information. This is not what we make up. And also, to understand that, at times, when we are recruiting, either from within or outside the district, many of the salaries that people are bringing forward are higher than what we are offering. And no one is going to take the responsibility, incredible hard work of being a principal of an urban school, without that, that compensation. And I think the committee understands that. There are three major next steps.
Couple of other questions. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, actually, for Heather, on the elementary school principals, and I appreciate the extra detail from, from the subcommittee meeting. But how many do we have? Is there, are there four more elementary? We have more than 16 elementary principals, correct?
We have 19.
How many?
19.
19. And on the, on the high school, middle school principals, we have five total?
We have three, because we've taken out-
You have two at the high school?
I'm sorry, yes, we have five.
So, we have five.
Yes, we have five.
Right? And I know we have one great headmaster.
A big headmaster.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Josh?
Yeah, so, I think it goes without saying that our principals aren't in it for the money, and that they're generally paid less than what they're probably worth on the, on the open market, and that, as a district, we should, we should go about fixing that in some way. I think it's important to, I've just been trying to think about this since we heard about it at the finance subcommittee meeting, that it's important that we get the number right. Because if the goal is to increase retention, I think there's increase, there are increases that are great and deserved, but they don't increase retention, right? It's just, it's just the raise, which is, you know, I can't think, I can think of few people more deserving than, than some of our principals, but we have to set that rate at the appropriate level that, that's going to keep that person in the district longer. And I think there are other things that go into the retention factor as well. I'll also mention, I think equity is important. So, part of the reason that this is an issue is, it's difficult to hire a principal that demands, say, $110,000 a year, when you've got principals in the district that work in similar-sized schools, that have worked here for a long time, that are loyal people, that are great at their job, that make $100,000, say. Because you, you can't pay somebody new to the district more and set up an equity issue. So, I think that's all part of it, too. I obviously support it, you know, hopefully, the budget allows it. And maybe it's something, if we can't do immediately to fix for the next school year, it's something we could phase in over time. But again, I actually agree with the chairman's point, that it might not be a school committee to-
I think it is important to recognize that stepping in here in 2013 was an intolerable situation, in terms of principals relaying to me that they had not had raises for five years. We do not want to be the district who does that. Now, we tried to catch up, and, in fairness, but you can't catch up, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, given the needs of the budget. Also, understand that prior to 2013, principals were not evaluated on a regular basis. They are evaluated every year, they're evaluated part of their mid-year, the beginning of year goals, mid-year goals, and of course, end-of-year goals. And that is tied to performance increases, within a range. So, I think you know that, but I think it's important for everybody to have that same body of knowledge, that we would be doing a disservice to the committee and to principals, falling back into that trap of, well, we're just not going to give any increases. And that's how we got here. And I don't think anybody at this table wanted that to happen, but it did. So-
You talked about, this was set up primarily for retention efforts. Well, why?
One of the many, yes.
What, because this is kind of surprising to me. This is one of the few things I haven't heard from principals. What are we looking at outside of salary for the retention of principals? I think that's a bigger issue, from what I understand, speaking with people, than salary is.
Well, I'll speak to-
Have we surveyed them?
I could speak to the exit data that I have thus far.
Okay, yeah, that would be fantastic.
But I cannot provide any, any details that will identify individuals for obvious reasons.
Yeah, sure.
Because it's confidential. So, I could, I could speak during the personnel report to the percentages completed of the exit survey, like I committed to last month. That survey's open until July 15th, so I will not have a full presentation, probably until the August school committee meeting. We left that open intentionally until July 15th, so people would feel comfortable whether they wanted to respond now, or if they wanted to respond after June 30th, they had some time to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you're going to talk about next steps?
Yes. I can tell you that retention is very much related to individuals who have stepped up, that I'm extremely proud of, who were teachers in this school system, who became principals, and who probably five, six years ago, didn't think of that. So, their ability to take that risk, and to get the training and development, and put themselves into it, is huge, in terms of commitment, which I think all of us want to be able to have. And to be able to produce results, which is critical for these, for this role. Heather, has, we have three next steps, and Heather, if you can just go through those?
Yeah, so, we are looking to move forward to, you know, as we go through salary adjustments, to increase salaries next year, to get us, you know, more in the ballpark of where we feel we should be. We are also looking to do the same process to review, excuse me, specifically, alternative learning programs that are comparable to both Trinity Day and Wailing City Junior Senior High School. And, you know, obviously, the administration wants to ensure that principals both receive annual reviews of their performance, as well as their salary. So, that way, we avoid the situation that frankly, put us in this place of equity, as[1751.54] So that way we avoid the situation that frankly, put us in this place of equity, as Mr. Errol spoke to earlier, of several years of no increases that compound year after year.
So the next slide I'm going to have Andrew go through. You can see, we have compared the actual from FY17, 18, and 19. I do want to call your attention that the level service budget that is in the current budget we are working on is 139 million, which is approximately nine million than last year, and that is with no increase in services or resources, simply with what we have. Andrew, do you want to go through these and explain the difference in the numbers so the committee has a sense of where we're going?
Yes, there's a lot here and it's very important to note the headings because the FY17 you'll see is the actual. That was actually, what was actually expended that year. FY18 is what is budgeted this year and then what's requested. When we were looking at formatting this, there was a discussion about whether we should put up the FY17 that was originally proposed with all of the add-ons or the FY18 that was originally proposed. So that can be somewhat confusing. And so what we're dealing with here are real figures for F17 and real figures for F19 and then the proposed figure, for, real figures for both F17 and 18 and then what's proposed for F19. Just, so just a note on that as we dive into these. But you'll see it broken down by the larger category, salary and wages, special ed, utilities, all getting to a figure, and general expenses, all getting to a figure of net school spending. Then you add on to that the non-net school spending, which is transportation and adult ed, mainly transportation, so you'll note the increase we discussed there. So that's the level service budget that we've asked our cost centers to come up with and that we input into the financial system, the accounting system. And that, whenever, all of our obligations for next year, our obligations to maintain the same level of service, our input, our operating budget would be 139.6 million dollars. Now, all of the enhancement requests, the collective enhancement requests that we've solicited from all of those cost centers come out to about $7 million. So as with last year, starting with the total with enhancements, you're at a figure of about $147 million. Right now, the level service budget is at a hundred, just shy of 140 million. And then outside of that, other discussions around what's the, the net school spending figure, that's ongoing and we'll have that available, the estimated net school spending figure, we'll have that available for the budget workshop.
Jim, go ahead. Andrew, you alluded to it a little bit. Just, can you tell me what makes up the, the nine million in the increase to the level service budget? I know I'm skipping two slides ahead to 19.
So if you look, one, one useful place to start, if you look at the salary and wages. So you can see that that's an increase of $4 million or so. So that's fully budgeted, all positions filled with, all current positions in our position system filled with all of the staff, lane, and CBA raises factored in. So that's a significant portion of that. Then all of our estimated special ed obligations, to be frank, over the past, let's say, F16, F17, I, I don't think special education was budgeted upfront. The cost spikes snuck up on the district. So we've been very eager to work out a smart financial tracking of those costs and fully budgeted, budget for those costs this year, which we did. So you won't see any large million dollar transfers to fill a special education hole this year and fully budget for those next year. But again, special ed costs faster than inflation and you'll see those go up as well. And as we get into the workshops, we can discuss what's going on with Circuit Breaker, or we can bail out special education, or are there other mechanisms to do that as well? And then the general expense cost increases, which run the, run the entire gambit of, of cost increases that are non-salary and wage.
Yeah, I, I respect the, the work put in to get to accurate forecasting and I'm thankful that we're not in the position other districts are in this time of year, which is, you know, holding our heads and figuring out what we're going to cut in the budget. At the same time, roughly $9 million increase to just the level service number is larger than we've seen in the past. And, I mean, even looking, so the total with enhancements number at the bottom, 17 and 18, both, you see a reduction between the total with enhancements to the final budget of about 10 million. This year, if you were to reduce the total with enhancements to 10 million, you'd still be under the level service budget by, you know, two or three million. So we might have to consider going further into the budget than we have in the past and we know that's not something that we can afford in a program sense, but it's not going to be an easy year.
So the next slide, pretty much.
Let's see, a couple of thoughts.
I think under, with Dr. Durkin's leadership here, the, all of our contracts, am I correct in saying, are fixed for this year?
Yes.
So our numbers are really accurate.
Correct.
You're not having to estimate any additional increases. They're built in and completed at this point.
Yes. So the next slide kind of just explains in a little bit bigger print what, what the FY19 is. You can see, and that level service at 139 is, is disconcerting because that's exactly what we have with no reductions. And I can say to you, the reductions are going to be very challenging. We'll work through that as we do as a group. So when you look at the next slide, what's not included, these are called enhancement requests, but at the same time, I've been asking for reading specialists. We have one in Lincoln School and two at Gomes, and it is not nearly enough. And for us to increase achievement for particularly students in K through three, to get them reading, we need more reading specialists. They're at a cost of $65,000 each. We need six ESL teachers and that is conservative. Two would be at the high school, one at Hatum McFadden, one at the Jacobs School, one at DeValls, and one shared between Lincoln and Gomes. That is for the increased numbers of English language learners that are in our schools. Our science curriculum materials, we are looking at K through two. Last year, as you know, with the help of a grant from Siemens, we were able to do grade three, so we had grade three through eight. Our middle school math supplement materials, our materials in which our students need to be able to practice high level rigorous learning. Having just math books is not enough. How do we want our students to be able to develop algorithms, you know, exponential understanding, algebra, trigonometry, all of that, the math supplementary materials based on the units of study are critically important for our kids to have that practice. I've spoken often about the level classroom libraries. Kids need to be able to read and read content as well as fiction at their reading level without having to be in a actual anthology or a reading book. So why shouldn't I be reading about climate change or the Titanic or about, you know, different types of bees? But if I have a book on that level and I can read it at my fourth grade level, I'm increasing my learning as well as my strategies. These are about $1,200 each to be able to get a full library of all different levels of reading at high interest, low level readings and, which is very powerful. We have been very slow in meeting these libraries in our schools.
Jim.
And the last is our student success centers, which is something the previous committee has seen in the sense of $15,000 for a paraprofessional at 19 of our schools to help our students who may be making poor choices and who need a timeout or a situation before they return to the general ed classroom. I'll be happy to go over any of this.
Superintendent, are any of these classroom libraries, are, are these part of the Pearson curriculum?
No.
No.
These are separate and apart.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Well, we have them in some schools, but not nearly enough.
What, the Jerson?
The, no, the actual classroom libraries.
Oh, okay.
We do have them in some schools in some grades, but for us to really do a job at our elementary levels, we need about 300 open. So, so that is what's not included. What is included, I'm going to let Andrew go through this.
Dr. Durkin, if I, if I may, real quick, you mentioned the six ESL teachers. I have two at the high school, one at Haymac, one at Jacobs, and I'm, I think I'm missing one or two.
Gomes? Two at high school, one at Haymac, one at Jacobs, one at DeValls, and one shared between Lincoln and Gomes.
DeValls is what I mean. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the four social study curriculum libraries, there is no cost there because in our infinite ability to negotiate, we have worked with the vendor to pilot that free.
Great.
We need more vendors like that, so.
Do you have, you have the free ones we can add?
I would love to say more, so that's why there's no cost next to it.
Who is that vendor?
We're looking actually at piloting through a few different options. So not just one, but looking at.
Could I have those, those please and any agreements that they may have made with the district?
We also like making it.
We've made agreements at this time.
Excuse me?
We've made formal agreements at this time.
But what we do like is to talk to several vendors because then they understand that are trying these out could very well bring them to the actual program.
If they're, if they're free, we need to know where they're coming from and why. Thank you.
So what is included, I'm going to ask Andrew to go through this. What is very disturbing and something that you well know, the Title I entitlement grant is getting reduced more and more each year. We have had to make accommodations for that. We thought it was going to be as much as $100,000 more at 850, but it's at 775. And Andrew, if you can go through each of these items, this is what is included in the FY19 budget.
So as we've seen the federal, what are called federal entitlement grants, particularly the IDEA funding and Title I and Title II funding continue to be reduced. And not only that, but the regulations surrounding those grants, what was previously eligible to expand it from those grants changes and also the requirement to send that to private and parochial schools so that their piece of Title I has grown as well. So this is what the federal government has done to these programs in terms of reducing funding, increasing requirements, and increasing set-asides for private and parochial schools. And so we expect those grants to be at the lowest, record lows again. And amid cost increases, that's a rather severe cut, which is what you see here. Are, we intend, as we said earlier, for our set-asides within the facilities budget to continue so we can keep up and increase the momentum of facilities work, which is very important. We could spend an entire meeting talking about our facilities, conditions, and how we can address deferred maintenance and preventive maintenance projects as well as improvement projects. And so we, you will see those set-asides and further discussion of that in the workshops. We have a new science curriculum purchase with the committee approved last year. We have a four-year payment plan for that. We will be in year two and that's covered. The NB Connect technology project and other projects within the IT budget, as you'll see, when that cost center is examined or maintained. And we've also, as I said, fully budgeted for estimates in special education cost increases as well. So several important items that are within the FY19 budget.
So the next step is how we're going to get to balanced budget. These are the proposed meetings that we did have some preliminary discussion with the two members of the finance subcommittee. And once we finalize these, we will be happy to move forward with them, with the workshop meetings. Of course, if there are required more workshop meetings, we can obviously add them, but these are the general parameters of what we were going to be operating with. Okay?
Yeah, so I, one of the things that we'll have to take a very close look at is obviously special ed spending. That's just a, obviously a huge driver of, a huge cost driver right now. It's been, you know, an issue for a couple of years now, but things are getting tighter.
Do we need a, do we need? Oh. How much of that special ed is reimbursed by the federal government through, or the state through Medicare or is there any reimbursement for that?
Yeah, we, we spent a lot of time this year on the Medicaid program. So Medicaid, we do process Medicaid claims for eligible students. And that's been going on for about 20 years and it's generally about a $2 million reimbursement to the city's general fund. Now, so that goes into the general fund and then the general fund, the school budget is part of the general fund as well, so there's not an immediate transfer there. So, but what we've done is, as part of our administrative cost agreement, we've worked out an agreement where beyond that $2 million or so threshold, depending on what we see coming from the federal government, we will capture any money above threshold and divert that to special ed costs increases within the district. So that's a mechanism we're working through right now. And what we did this year was we switched Medicaid billing services to a group called New England Medical Billing. And we got more favorable terms from them, we got more professional development and training and smarter systems to capture. So we do predict an increase in Medicaid dollars, very pleased about that. We do predict an increase in Medicaid dollars. Those Medicaid increases are above that threshold, we capture more of that and reinvest that and with a conservative forecast, you have to be very conservative with Medicaid because they're highly auditable dollars and the repayment schedule is, is pretty punitive. But we, with a conservative estimate, if we can perhaps defray some of that special ed cost increase.
But the first $2 million, we are not using for those special ed students is what you're telling me?
It's a general, of course, it's sent to the general fund, the, the city general fund.
Wow, okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question, and maybe for my colleagues as much as the staff, but as a new member of the school committee, what are just some ways that you all have seen your ability to add value in this process look like? So any just tips and suggestions for people getting up to speed?
Spend time with that man.
Andrew and I are meeting on Friday, so chat.
One of the largest items, in my opinion, is the administrative cost agreement with the city. That's, a lot of work has been done with that through Andrew's office over the last few years. As last year, I think I made the comment, it was probably the fairest number that we have come up with in a long time. And that's a credit, I mean, to Ari and the mayor's office to work with Andrew and Andrew and Teresa have been phenomenal on digging into the health data and such. So that's actually the, probably the biggest piece you could have some, some action with. Salaries take up, what is it, not?
Eighty.
Eighty percent, right. So about 80% is fixed. So we're only dealing with 20% actually. But the, the best suggestion I can make is ask questions and, and meet with Andrew and he's, he's got a really good.
I would also add, there's a reason why everything is in this budget. We, we simply do not add things for the sake of adding them. There is an instructional and a programmatic reason why we need certain items. And we generally do an anticipatory item as to what we're going to prevent problems with as well as what we're addressing. This school district would not be making the progress it is if we had not wisely taken some very tight dollars and invested them in the things that our children are going to need the most. So I ask that you pay attention to that and ask questions about it. Why are you choosing X versus Y? Why are these programs more important than that? Dr. DeFalco, you may want to add anything with that?
No, I think it's just aligning the fiscal though always with the education plan.
Right.
I think that's something that everybody's worked collaboratively really hard to do in the past few years.
Knowing that there's never fully enough.
Yeah.
Well said. Okay.
Should I make, I think it might be appropriate to make as a motion that we schedule at least the February 26th and the March 13th meeting as budget workshops and we'll see if there have to be more.
Second that.
Just as, so we have a starting point.
Question on that motion, is that, is that considered a full meeting of the school committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
They'll be here.
Yes, they will be here.
Yeah, that works for me. Okay.
What time are we having that? Six?
Yeah, standard six. Six, convenient, or five, or 5:30?
I remember a six.
Yeah, why don't we do six?
It's six, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the, the next portion of my report, the remaining part, is a brief summary that Dr. DeFalco and I will do on the social emotional learning review that was conducted by the district management group. And, what am I doing, Rob, here? Okay, thank you, all right. So essentially, if you recall, we received a grant from DESE to look at the array of social emotional learning practices as well as staffing, determining that it is very important for our children to develop a sense of emotional intelligence in the sense of regulating emotions and being able to develop a sense of well-being about learning, which comes from how do I regulate my emotions and make right choices? So DMG has finished their report. As I mentioned, it is quite lengthy in the depth that it has gone through and we're giving a very short summary today of what that looks like and we'll be happy to do it more in-depth at the, a subcommittee meeting. The three objectives that they have focused on is obviously student outcomes, that social emotional learning is added value for our children to be able to learn more and to learn more deeply, to really look at the resources we have in that area and those resources include not only programs and curriculum, but also people, and we have a number of people. And then how efficiently and effectively are those people operating to be able to reach those outcomes? The first part that we have is the commendations that DMG found and they did extensive amount of focus groups, looking at schedules, talking with a great number of people in pretty much every school that was operating from. And I'm going to ask, Dr. DeFalco and I will jump in. The commendations were first of all, that staff are committed to look at the success of their students and work hard to support them. That it is taking on the perspective of the other and making sure that we're negative, we're censoring negative comments and, as well as hurtful comments and making the right choices. Staff were found to be reflective and willing to talk about areas of improvement for the sake of the district, staff and students. That we have implemented social emotional initiatives, specifically our zones of regulation and our social thinking curriculum, that not only helps us with data, but also looks at community partnerships, particularly as we look for students, look, working for student, with students who have trauma-induced issues as well as the teacher capacity to deal with those. And we have, on the docket and in our programs, already intensive social-emotional programs for students, particularly at the elementary level. And that central office is integrated in terms of the importance of social-emotional learning as part of our accelerated improvement plan. There are opportunities for consideration, and some of these are, probably are not new to you, because they have come forward from principals, and I'm going to have Dr. DeFalco go through these.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Durkin. And I think really the important part to this, as you move, as we move through this, and then at a much deeper level with the subcommittee, is that there is a real, very strong focus on the whole child and making sure that we are, you know, developing not just proficient kids, but happy and healthy kids, so that, you know, each student has that opportunity for a well-rounded growth. And so our areas for, for growth or opportunities for consideration in terms of our next steps is really looking at defining deeper the what of social-emotional learning across grades, schools, and the district. So it's really about defining better what we're trying to accomplish and then putting that alignment to it. The second area is really to bring social-emotional learning to the classroom teachers so that we can integrate it better into our instruction. So right now, I think it may feel a little more as a standalone, because our adjustment counselors are really leading the charge in the front line of this work. And what we want to do is be able to integrate that language and those supports into classroom instruction every day where it would be most impactful and useful for all students. The third area is to increase those clinical supports to tier-two and tier-three students by streamlining any, any non-clinical responsibilities to our adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, those that are really supporting the children's social-emotional development, such as reducing duties, those kinds of things, and increasing the clinical supports to students to ensure that they have more of that frontline support. And we'll see a time study that we did with the support staff in a couple of minutes. The fourth area is really to look at how to improve work around cultural competencies. And so, you know, that's really developing the understanding of what that is for our staff at all levels. And again, it's defined very clearly in the next slide. We'll see exactly what we mean by cultural competencies. And then the last is really having that consistent student-focused work for all support staff and making sure that we are developed, developing very clearly a tiered system of support for social-emotional learning and ensuring that our attendance officers, our wraparound coordinators, psychologists, et cetera, are really in that proactive role, trying to help get ahead of issues with our students instead of just responding to.
So this slide talks about the level of time that is being spent with students. And you can see that behaviorists, who are those individuals who work with students who may have challenging behavior issues, are spending an average of 76% of their time actually with students. The range is from 38% to 100%. You can see our guidance counselors are spending less than a quarter of that time, 25% actually with students. You may recall, last year, in talking about the middle school redesign plans, there was a call for more student adjustment counselors and possibly redefining what guidance counselors do, particularly at the middle school level. And the third is our student adjustment counselors really looking at the amount of time they're spending, less than half their time with students, when it ranges from at 44%, between 13% and 87%. We have specific data as to what that time is being spent on, and to really delineate between those issues that are involving crisis, a student who is becoming a danger to himself and others, or escalating to a level where he is unsafe, or she is unsafe, to a level where we're doing more preventative work, working with students on appropriate emotions, how do you deal with anger, how do you make the right choices, how do you develop friendships? That has to really become the forefront of preventative work, so we don't need to manage with that.
Can I just ask a question? So what's the takeaway from this data, and how does that compare to other districts? What's the so what here?
Yeah, so I think the so what from this perspective, and that's a great question, and so let me take a step back and really explain very quickly why we decided to move forward with this work. In our district's accelerated improvement plan, over the past five years, we've seen a significant refocusing and deeper focus on the whole child and really looking at what are those non-academic barriers that are getting in the way of students being, you know, proficient, reaching grade level at minimum, and, of course, accelerating beyond that. And so one of the things that we did quickly was, we looked at a lot of research, we looked at a lot of programs, we looked at different positions, and then really through an equitable process, we, we were able to determine what schools need which levels of support, because they had students with significant needs, non-academic needs. And so what we wanted to do was kind of hit the pause button for a minute, say, okay. So we've done a lot of work in this area. We've really worked very strategically to address tier-one needs, right, so all students, tier-two, tier-three. We've added different positions, we've added programs to really help get ahead of some of these issues. But have we invested, you know, in the right resources? Do we have the right positions in place, the right programs in place? So we wanted a different look at what we've done thus far to help address the non-academic needs for our students. I just wanted to put that little piece in upfront. And so now it's looking at kind of the so what is, where do we make adjustments? And so we just had, you know, a very preliminary kind of thumbnail sketch of a budget conversation around the needs that we have. And so while we look at, you know, the budget restrictions, and I say that respectfully, it is what it is, you know, we have to look at, how are we investing in the right positions and programs to meet the needs that are in front of our students? And so that so what is, I think, very, you know, theoretical, kind of up here, it's looking at what we have, is it the right stuff, is it the right, you know, positions? But then a more logistics-type question, taking this to a subcommittee to actually delve into the nitty-gritty. Behind this are detailed reports, self-reporting on a time study on how each one of these positions are spending their time, what they're doing, and the impact it's having on children. So I think we actually need to get under the hood of this and say, you know, now that we have all this information, what does it mean for how we're reallocating, you know, resources for either staff or programs?
I think it's really important to recognize that the educational plan has to match the fiscal plan. We know we're not going to get a plethora of $20 or more million. However, are we using our dollars, as Dr. DeFalco said, in the wisest way to develop that whole child? And one of the things that we are collecting information on is a number of students in crisis, and meaning whether an ambulance, or there has to be possibly a child sectioned to be able to get the support he or she needs. I've spoken to this committee, though that is becoming younger and younger in a number of our students. Our students are pre-K, kindergarten, demonstrating very significant needs that need special attention. If you have not an individual who can help with that, how do you work with the families? Because as a pediatrician has, a good classroom teacher at the younger grades is serving both students and families. And our wraparound managers, our family resource coordinators have all worked very diligently, looking at the most intensive need of students, but as you can see, one of the recommendations was looking at our tier-two students, who are not, who have needs but may not be multi-agency involved. So the real reason is looking at this is how are we spending our dollars? Are we spending it in the wisest ways? And how do we make those courageous decisions to maybe make some shifts? A few years ago, we used DMG to look at the para contract. It was a very challenging piece of information, where our paras, the way they were being trained, the way they were being used, the whole evidence of how they were being assigned was very wrong. We used that as the basis for the next para negotiation, and in six years, the paras had not been given a new contract. Not only were they compensated more fairly and had the better ladder to be able to eventually become teachers, but also we were able to delineate between those instructional paras in classrooms and those who are not instructional paras, and consider the compensation for that. That helped us a great deal in professionalizing the role of the paraprofessional. The same issue is here in a different way. How do we professionalize taking social-emotional learning and make it a real cornerstone of who we are and how we can serve our students better? Knowing that the needs are not going to stop, they're only going to increase, and schools can only do so much, but at the same time, how do we supplement what our partners can help us do? So I will be looking forward to going forward with this report. It's about 60 pages, going more in-depth. We picked out a few elements so that you could at least get a taste for it.
Couple of questions, since I wasn't here when this started. How much did this study cost us?
It was about $60,000.
About $60,000? When was, when did we receive this, the 60-page report?
We just received it, I want to say it was maybe two weeks ago.
Okay, if I could get a copy of that, please. And I'm hoping that there is more information about the teachers and not just to focus on counselors. Is there anything about the teachers?
There is some teacher feedback. However, the goal was to look at those support roles that supplement teachers' work. But there is, yes, there is extensive work about what teachers think should be needed, what are some of the areas they could use professional development with, et cetera. But it's a full, comprehensive report.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the last page goes through a very important part of what social-emotional learning is, is how do we develop the cultural competence of our staff in ways that are critically important to serving our children that do not all look like us? And there are seven methods that they have gone through, I'm sorry, several fundamental ways, and there are five major ones. And Dr. DeFalco, do you want to go through this?
Yeah, and I think the idea here is that, you know, as we continue to look at those non-academic needs for our students, how do we work with our staff to help them better understand, you know, some of the challenges and the assets that kids are bringing forward to the table? And I think sometimes we tend to look at them as challenges first, when in fact there are significant assets our kids have. And so, you know, this is really the, kind of the adult's piece of it, and I certainly won't sit and read them to you, but these five areas are really how we are going to continue to kind of double down the emphasis and focus working with the adults. To your point, Mr. Olivera, the teaching staff, and how to really work with the teachers to build some capacity in these five areas that they understand better the students that are sitting in front of them. And so these are really the five focal areas of that work.
Yep, Colleen?
So would we have a way of gauging where we're at now with these competencies, and would we be able to measure progress against them?
So the only way to measure that at this point would be anecdotal, in that the mentor program for new teachers has actually done a pretty, a pretty proficient job of implementing and embedding these pieces in the new teacher training. As far as the, you know, existing staff or returning staff, we've done very little with this. So we have a lot of work to do in this area, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and that concludes my report.
All right. Yeah, I think it'd be useful, if you have, just to pick up on Mr. Olivera's point, if you have, you could send around, 60 pages is not that long. If you have a PDF, you could send to everybody, that'd be great. Okay. So next, next is public comment. We didn't have any sign-ups tonight, it turns out, so we'll turn right to the business office report, and Mr. O'Leary is already in place.
So we can start with the function code report, which shows every cost center or every cost function code within the district. And if you turn to the second page, you'll see where we're at, about 54% spent at this point of the year, which again makes sense. We are getting into what we call the closeout portion of the year, as we've discussed, when we get to look at the cost centers closer. Any questions on the function code report?
Why don't we, do we have, it wouldn't be listed here. It occurred to me as we were going through the FY19 presentation, whether we have a projected, actual for, a project, a projected budget for, year-end budget for special ed. So we had, what are we projecting for year-end for special ed? That's the question.
Yes. So we're, yeah, we're predicting that.
Special ed tuition.
Correct. Yeah, we're predicting we can accommodate it between current circuit breaker and the local budget. So what we do, much like this, we meet every two weeks with the special education director, and we've got monitoring tools there as well, with exactly that question, okay, what's coming in? In fact, we did this in the finance subcommittee in October as well. What are the outer district tuitions by each tuition? What is that going to mean as we get into the spring? Are there any, and asked that question, are there any surprises there? Is there going to be $250,000 tuition, et cetera? And so we made that projection in the fall, that we can accommodate what we have currently and have, with the circuit breaker report, you have about $700,000 left in circuit breaker. So that's not bad. I mean, it's much, the more left in circuit breaker, the better. But that's pretty good that we're not running completely dry or not having to get other savings to bail it out.
Yeah. Yeah. If you have the actual figure, it's useful, if you think about the 19 budget. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. I turned the end of page two on that, the tuition for non-public schools and tuition to collaboratives, is there that much of a deficit?
Yes, and then that's accommodated the line just above those two. So they operate as, they operate as three accounts. So you'll see the account, the 753 accommodates the deficits under those two, because you never know which is.
Okay, so that's the balance?
Yeah. So you could almost, you know, do a subtraction, 753 minus.
293.
Yeah, the other two. So, yeah, so on the local end, we're pretty much fully expended, and then we've been dipping into circuit breaker, which is what you do when you go beyond that. And we projected that out for the year prepaid, we prepaid tuition, we've also encumbered tuition, and again, about $600,000, $700,000 forecast to be left in the circuit breaker, which is a reserve.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
And we can get a closer look at the departments, and you can see that most departments are heading towards that 80%, 90% figure, which is where we want them to be at this point of the year. We're encouraging folks to make sure they're finalizing their orders. The funds have been appropriated for cost centers for a purpose, and the purpose should be underway at this point, so we want to see folks getting to that 80%, 90% figure. And we want to, as soon as we get back from February vacation, we'll be into March and April and closing out with the city, and the city order, making sure that we can get everything closed by, by June. So less and less activity as the year closes out. And we can turn to the salary spend-down report, and we have the salaries up to 120. And again, as we've been monitoring to the year, you can see on the second page that at this point, forecasting a salary surplus at the end of the year at this point. And as we've been doing, we've been fully accounting for all vacancies, assuming, assuming a full-budget projection for all vacancies. And this, with that in mind, this is the current forecasted balance for surplus at the end of the year for salaries. We've also included, as we do periodically, a rundown of the revolving accounts. You can see in the middle of the revolving account page is a circuit breaker account we mentioned. And so while it's reasonably positive that we are forecasting a balance there, you can all, you can see in the expenses column that the amount we've been leaning on circuit breaker has increased every year. And so again, with that theme, how special ed costs are going up. And statewide, the state has been less than generous with circuit breaker. There's a lot of advocacy now, asking for a supplemental budget, whereas the state funds circuit breaker claims at somewhere in the, usually around 75%. This year, they've been funding them at 65%. So a lot of districts who have been leaning heavily on circuit breaker have been screaming for a supplemental appropriation. Whether or not that will be forthcoming or not, we'll see. So if it does, that balance will increase for us for year-end, which will become crucial when we get to budget discussions.
Question on revolving.
Sure. Andrew, if you could, please. The only thing that really stands out for me is the 1231 continuing yet.
Yeah.
Is that concerning to you at all?
Not really. It's definitely worth noticing, and it's useful to monitor, because it is forecasting a deficit at the moment. And we, that's due to some factors, primarily, you know, an increase in enrollment, an increase in non-tuition enrollment, which means that the program can't sustain all of its enrollment on tuitions alone. So require, so at the end of the year, that will require a modest, a modest assistance from the local budget if tuitions aren't forthcoming to, to defray that. So in the big picture, it certainly speaks to, we might want to look at it for next year as a sustainable model, but big picture, adult ed program is about a 1.4 million, or 1.1 million dollar program. Basically, by operating an adult ed program, we can then apply for those grants, bring in about $1 million, spend about $100,000 of the local budget, build up this tuition account. So in the. So, in the context of the million dollars, it's not that much, but it's certainly worth monitoring because a deficit is a deficit.
And on that same account, what programs fall under the guide of continuing yet? I know that we have a few different programs that are considered, that are considered continuing yet.
Yeah. So, GED, ESOL, evening high school. Those are the primary ones. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Transfers?
And we have transfers for your approval. So, as I stated, we, what you see this time of year is cost centers are asking principals if there is an item you have budgeted for, and you have some money left, or if there isn't, some unanticipated item that's come up that you need to do small transfers for. So, that's what you see here. Basically, you see the purchase of Chromebook carts, purchase of technology, where principals have savings, essentially, items that they'd budgeted for that they don't need, or cost are cheaper, some savings. Those are being transferred for Chromebook purchases. And other cases where something was unanticipated, where some supply items or some PD was 100 or 200 more expensive, and so, funds are being transferred to clean that up.
For whatever it's worth, at the finance subcommittee, we did go through this, and it was good to see that, the purchase of Chromebooks. I mean, the money's being utilized in a great spot. So, you know, we recommended that the school committee accept the transfers as presented. But I think Mr. Carter has a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I think I know the answer, and I think we've covered it before, but just for the sense of the public knowledge, on the back page, under the principal salaries district-wide-
Yes.
That's from the point where it was centrally located, and we've since distributed to each cost center individually per school, correct?
Exactly. It's a more accurate accounting. So, whereas the pool of money was budgeted in a local account, a central account, now as the expenses have hit, we're pushing it, pushing those funds out to the account, the school-level account. So, it's a more accurate reporting.
Thank you.
Chairman, what capacity are these Chromebooks being used at in the elementary school?
So, they would be used for a variety of purposes. So, if you can imagine a teacher implementing in with a lesson, okay, let's look up this or let's look up that. We also have supplemental learning programs, everything from BrainPop to Lexia, where students can jump on and have a tailored learning supplement in literacy or numeracy, and then also used in state assessments as well.
And at what grade level do they start using these?
Oh, all the way down, I mean kindergarten.
So, we take the, we've taken, this committee has decided to take the human interaction out of teaching our kids?
No, it's just a tool. It's an instructional tool that-
At kindergarten level?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, I think, okay. All right, no, that's fine. We disagree on that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else on the proposed transfers?
The motion need to be approved as presented?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor? All right. Adrian, nice work. Thank you very much. Actually, any update on MSBA items for the committee?
In December, the board of the MSBA moved our Brooks project forward. Tomorrow night, we'll be at city council finance, talking about that along with some capital projects to have the city council in March hopefully approve bonding for the Brooks project, and then we can return the PFA to be executed for that to MSBA.
One quick one on Jacob School. How is the school, is it completed other than the outside work? Are we in good shape? I'm looking at, there's Kennedy back there, and Andy, how are we doing? Go ahead. Don't everybody jump in.
We're substantially complete.
All right. So, mainly, it's just the exterior work we're waiting on right now?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. Andrew, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Emsley, personnel report. I'll try to keep it brief, as to conserve your energy.
Thank you, Mayor Richard. For this month in our personnel report, we're showing 23 appointments, seven of which are within UTA, seven are non-union, seven are ASP, and two are paraprofessionals of the UTA staff. 57% are currently licensed at time of hire. The remaining are either in process of licensure, we feel they'll get licensed within 90 days, which is a period granted by DESI, or we will apply for a waiver. We have seven retirements to report, four are within UTA, one paraprofessional, one ASP, 12 resignations, four UTA, five dot-union, one paraprofessional, and two within the ASP group. I also wanted to remind everyone that's either here or watching at home, that works for the district, to UTA staff, the district-wide transfer, also known as the bid process, that list was sent out to all buildings and posted on Friday, February 9th. Applications to bid or transfer are accepted until 5:00 PM on Friday, the 16th of February, and they are sent to the Office of Human Capital Services at the administration building. And we ask staff to reach out to either the Office of HCS or the EDVEA with any questions regarding the process. And I spoke briefly to it earlier, but as you recall, we launched the exit survey, the new exit tool, in January for the 17, 18 school year. Again, the survey is available through July 15th. It allows people to not complete it until after their last day, if that's more comfortable for them. We have one for 17, 18 school year, so their effective date is within the 17, 18 school year, and we have a survey for anyone whose effective date is within the 18, 19 school year. And we have had no one respond to the 18, 19 school year effective date yet, and we have a 35% response rate so far to 17, 18 school year. The link continues to be sent out as we're notified of resignations and retirements, and it is our hope that that response rate percentage increases. And as I committed to, I will remind, give an update on that monthly until the full report is available.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Colleen?
Just real quick on the, on the exit surveys, are you finding that, I know you said 35%, and I know that we've discussed that through great length over the last couple of years. Are you finding that to be positive, considering the lack of response that you've had previously?
It's probably right where we've been, as far as the percent, you mean the percentage of responders?
Yeah.
It's probably exactly where we've probably been after a whole year. As a reminder, we've, my office has gone back, and anyone who's had a resignation or retirement date that we had either a district or a personal email for since July 1st, 2017, we sent that to. So, I was hoping that we would get more by this time. Because it's anonymous, I don't know who has and who has not necessarily responded when it's in large groups of staff, like, you know, paraprofessionals are large head counts. So, we'll send out reminder emails to everyone, which might be some people who have completed it, might be some people who haven't. But I'm very hopeful that we can climb past 35%.
And just for sake of those that aren't watching here physically, they can reach that through?
They can contact my office and provide an email address. At this point, we've called anyone that we didn't have an email address for, and we've left messages. We haven't had a strong response of people getting back to us with their personal email address, but we'll continue to make those calls through July 14th, most likely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I'd ask that Subcommittee on Finance that we get an update on the, the list we had gotten a couple of months ago on Central Avenue.
Yes, I emailed you, Mr. Olivera, and it'll be in executive session. You'll receive those copies.
All right. I just, I didn't know when.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You will have that in your hands.
Yep. Thank you. I did get the email, I just didn't know when we're going to get it.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Well done.
Thank you, Mayor Richard.
You get a motion to accept and place on file the personnel?
See, we'll place on file, yeah. A second.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Emsley. School committee reports. Many members of the school committee wish to offer a report at this time?
I just want, I just want to mention that last week, I got to see the concert at Normandin Middle School. And, you know, again, it's phenomenal to see the arts and music at certain levels of the district. I'm glad to see that the middle school had such a huge participation at Normandin. And I know that Keith's concert is tomorrow night, I believe. So, please, you know, stop by, take a look at it, watch the kids, support the arts. And I'm not going to take away from the student rep report, because I know she'll have something a little further. So, I'll cover the middle school for you.
All right. Go on. Josh?
I just want to give an update on the superintendent search process, as I'm on the search committee. And from the beginning, I said I wanted to try to bring as much information to this body as possible. I could say that the process has been moving along. It's been kind of a busy month. I feel like when we initially started the process, we were a little bit behind, and I think we've caught up. Some of it was a little industrious, some of it was a little, a little different than the way you would normally do it, but I think it was necessary to catch up. And I think now we're in a decent position, where we're ahead of some urban districts, we're behind some others, we're behind a lot of others that started their process earlier, much earlier in the process. But I think we've caught up and we're in a decent spot. The search committee, or screening committee, however you want to say it, met on January 17th and also on January 29th, both here at Keith. The first meeting was sort of an introduction, sort of informational, between the members of the, of the search committee. The second meeting, we dug into the details a little bit deeper with the search firm that was retained, Hazard, Young, and Atia, and just asking around the state. They have a pretty good reputation. I talked to other school committee members in some other districts where they've done work before, and they said that they led a pretty good search there. So, I'm hopeful about that. They also went through a timeline. We had set sort of a provisional one that's been tweaked, and I'll mention those dates in a second. The committee, at that last meeting on the 29th, went into executive session to, you know, members of the committee had suggested some names that they thought might be fits for the position, for the search firm to investigate further and to approach. We also talked about some of the specifics of how an interview process will go, what kind of questions, what the format will be, et cetera. The search firm, Hazard, Young, and Atia, spent most of last week in the district. They did several focus groups with staff members and other district stakeholders. They interviewed each school committee member. Does that, I think everybody's been interviewed? Okay. They interviewed each school committee member. They also hosted three community forums, where I know my colleagues went to some of those as well, at Normandin, Keith, and Roosevelt, to represent all the areas of the city. There were about 30 or so people between the first two nights at Normandin and Keith. The third one was at Roosevelt. It was a rainy night. It was held a little bit earlier, at 5:00 o'clock. The turnout wasn't as great, but I was able to attend two of them. As I said, I know some of my colleagues were able to attend as well. I thought it was very, very informative, and it was great to hear from people that I haven't, you know, in my five years in the school committee, heard from before, people who took the opportunity to come out and share some things that I wasn't really thinking of. The three questions that the search firm asked in these sessions were to identify the strengths of the district, the challenges of the district, and the characteristics we'd like to see in the next superintendent. The questions were the same at the community forums, within the focus groups for staff and other folks, and with the interviews with school committee members. I tried to take time to think in my interview of what those characteristics, what the answers to those questions are for my interview with them, and I had a great conversation with Mr. Don MacRino, who's the associate that's working with us. I thought it was very productive, just to really brainstorm and think about, you know, what it is that I'd like to see. Folks in the forums had really good input, too, some things that I didn't think of that, as they said it, I said, you know, of course, of course. So, I thank everybody for making themselves a part of the process. We're still seeking some feedback. So, the survey and the email feedback is dated to close today because the search firm takes that information and puts it into a report, and they have to close it somewhere to get that report to us on time. But I'm sure that feedback will still be taken seriously if submitted afterwards. The survey is available at ecrasurvey.com/newbedfordma, E-C-R-A-survey.com/newbedfordma. And the search committee is also accepting feedback by email at superintendentsearch@newbedford-ma.gov, All those emails will end up with the screening committee. In addition to doing all this stuff, the search firm's also going to use their network to reach out to some people who might fit for the position. I've heard from other super, other school committees that have done superintendent searches that often the most effective way of finding a superintendent is to proactively reach out to people who weren't otherwise considering leaving their districts. So, I think that's something that we'll have to use to our advantage as well, and I'm glad that we have a firm that's someone that does that, and will be doing that for us as well. Let's see. So, next steps, just to go on the timeline a little bit. The deadline for applications is February 15th. That's this Wednesday, so we're wrapping up that phase of it. The search firm will then compile and distribute what they call a leadership profile, which is really a summary of the things that they've heard in the focus groups, the community sessions, and the interviews with school committee members. They try to discard stuff that doesn't appear often, and they just give you the things that are common themes. I think that's useful to a point. I think we all know, more or less, what makes an effective superintendent and what leads to that in other districts, but it'll be interesting to see that nonetheless. And I think the strengths and weaknesses of the district will be useful for the school committee and for that new person. The screening committee, after that point, will be presented with the candidate's information, where we'll be able to vet that and decide who will get initial interviews with the screening committee. That work, the interviews, will be done between the 27th and the 2nd. Shortly thereafter, there'll likely be three to four finalists that we'll announce publicly, hopefully in early March. The screening committee's work will conclude at that point, in which case the full, the full school committee will take over and vet those three or four finalists. That will include visiting those candidates' districts, getting to know them very well, interviewing them publicly in early to mid-March, and then by the end of the March month, we'll be able to announce a new superintendent, and that person will hopefully begin around July 1st. Again, all that information, the timeline, a brochure, the job posting, a link to the survey, just about all that information is available on the newbedfordschools.org website. If you go there, there's a link that says superintendent search, and all that stuff is listed there, including the email and the survey, which I hope everybody goes and takes tonight. If they can't tonight, then hopefully in the near future, but we'd like to get it all in there as soon as possible. So, that's what we've got to report. It's been an interesting process, and it's gone very quickly, I think, as it needs to. And I'm confident that we'll be able to find a good person, a qualified person, someone that we'll all enjoy working with. Thank you.
Good summary. Oh, good summary. Go ahead, Josh.
Follow-up question on that. Ms. Damaral, who was, who was in charge of the whole thing with the search firm and setting up the new schedule?
Sure. So, it initially began on the city side, just for the bidding purposes, after this body had authorized the superintendent screening subcommittee to go out and look for a firm to do that work. At the same time around there, the screening committee was formed. At our last screening committee meeting, where we were introduced to the search firm, I asked Don MacRino, who is our associate there, and he's a lifelong educator, he's worked in Connecticut, so he knows a little bit about it. And I pointedly asked him, because I think I know where you're going a little bit with some concerns that I shared as well. I asked him, you know, who do you answer to on this? Is, you know, because up until that point, most of your interactions come through the mayor's office, through the city. And I wanted to be very clear that my expectation is that now he works for the school committee through the screening committee at this point. He fully understood that. He said right in that meeting, no questions about it. I didn't ask a leading question. He said, you know, I work for the screening committee.
Okay. So, who made the decision, who agreed to the new timeline?
I think the timeline was worked out with the search firm, and they presented it to us.
With who? Who worked that? Your committee?
No, no, I think the screening committee, I mean, I'm sorry. I think the search firm had a suggested timeline based on the facts of the situation.
Okay. I know you're not the chairman of that subcommittee. However, the chairman of that subcommittee has a responsibility to this full committee to provide us information and changes on a timely basis. To be told to look on the website is BS. Okay? a timely basis, to be told to look on the website is BS, okay? We need to know in advance before the media does. When the school committee's getting information from the media, then from our leadership on this board, then there is a problem.
What was it, what was it that changed?
I knew nothing about the search committee, I knew nothing about the new timeline, it was a really poor job in getting the word out.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, once again, we wanna rush the effort.
Let me-
And not enough people, because people didn't know, and I'm not talking, I mean, I'm talking educated people, parents weren't notified, one of the easiest things we could have done was send something home with the students. A robo-call to the parents.
Could I answer you? Sure. So a robo-call was done, so-
Well, there are two parents I know sitting here that didn't get any.
Yeah, a robo-call was done, some of the parents at the Roosevelt meeting, not the Roosevelt, I'm sorry, the Normandin meeting that I spoke with said they were only there 'cause they got that, but I understand, your points about communication are well-taken.
I shouldn't be asking these questions three weeks after the fact.
I'm not the chair of the screening committee, but I will take responsibility.
Well, maybe if we actually had, the school committee member should be the chairman of that committee, not someone from out of town. Thank you.
I think it's, the arrangements worked okay, and I take responsibility for communicating with this body on that stuff. Some of the timeline and things were sketched out earlier, but if they were updated, yeah, I agree, the committee should have been-
Thank you.
Should have been in the loop.
Okay. Does anybody else have a report to offer? All right, hearing none. So we'll turn to the student representative report, actually, I have one thing I do wanna add, because Bernard E. Coelho is sitting right there, who's gonna be playing a role in this tomorrow, so there's an important City Council Finance Committee meeting tomorrow night, important to the school district, because, among other things, the City Council Finance Committee will be taking up certain very important improvements to the physical plant at New Bedford High School, and I know a number of members of the school committee have offered their words of support for that to members of the City Council, and I do appreciate that, because they do, the City Council does need to hear from this body on those matters, so I thank you, and whatever else, whatever other support, those of you who are in administration, or have any stake at all, as we all do frankly, in making New Bedford High School a stronger institution, please weigh in, so that, you know, our kids can get funding for those activities that are so important to, you know, the academic and student life of the school. All right, let me turn to the student, the student, what's-
I'd like to ask whoever's in charge of that to contact me tomorrow, I would like to be briefed on that, since I was told nothing about this, I would like to be briefed on what Ms. Coelho is gonna be discussing with the City Council.
Okay, well, we'll send materials along. Go ahead, student representative report. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Good evening, members of the school committee. I would like to discuss the events that have and will take place in the months of January and February. First, I'd like to congratulate the boys and girls basketball team for qualifying for states, and also, a group of athletes from the swim team had qualified for sectionals and will continue to compete in states. There already have been meetings now taking place for spring sports, and tomorrow there'll be a middle school visitation meeting, and this will try to recruit middle schoolers to attend our high school. Last week, there was a retest for MCAS biology, and these are for kids who, it was actually just the preparing one, it was just for kids who struggled and had failed the previous MCAS biology, and this is a preparation for the upcoming MCAS in the following months. And also, too, I'd like to advertise this, it's a parent portal thing, it's up and running now, it's through Aspen, and what this is, it's, it's like, you can be able to access your kid's grades and achievements that your kids are receiving. Now, Aspen was like, only available toward children, and they can only see their grades and like, their assignments, like what they had gotten in classes, but now that's available toward parents, and I highly advise parents to partake in this, because they can be, they can just play a role in their child's education. And also, too, there was a cultural event on January seventeenth, where over two hundred people attended. On February seventh, there was a college one-on-one meeting for students and families, which concerned like, attending college and scholarships, et cetera. On the beginning of March, there's, BCC is coming to our school for onsite acceptance for seniors, and there'll be a field trip for college at MTTI Vocational College, so if anyone's interested, they can still sign up for that field trip. Also, too, last week, there was a dual enrollment informal session, and it was like a question-and-answer tool from two sophomores in my grade. Now, I had, it's not dual enrollment for college, it's actually dual enrollment for eighth graders, and this is the third year that this program has been running at the high school. Now, I was a member of it, and I have to, I think that the program is phenomenal. I took ELA nine and Algebra I as an eighth grader, and I think that this is a really good program, because I think the classes were good and stuff like that, but like, the overall, like, experience I've gained from it is like, getting prepared for high school at such a young age. If you have, like, parents out there, if you have any, like, if your student is currently like, in seventh grade, or in middle school, or, and they'll be in eighth grade next year, I highly advise you, like, take, like, tell them to take dual enrollment, because they'll fully be prepared for high school, and they'll be at a great start. And currently, right now, I'm a sophomore, and I'm in AP Language and Hybrid Honors, which is pre-calculus in Algebra II, and those are actually junior classes, so I can graduate with five Englishes and five Maths, so that's a great step in the right direction for colleges, and me and my classmates have such a greater advantage than my other classmates. And before I conclude my report, I would like to propose a recommendation, I think that there should be a study hall at our school, many other schools have this, and when enrolled, like, I'm one of these students, I'm a three-season athlete, I play field hockey, basketball, and tennis, and I'm in rigorous courses such as AP Research and AP Language and Honors classes, and it's very difficult every night to like, come home and like, do my homework in a timely manner and do it efficiently, so I think that having a study hall will be a lot like, stress-free for these students, and, you know, students can complete homework more efficiently and in a timely manner, and me and my other classmates have really wanted this study hall, and I really think in the coming years, this should be a recommendation. Thank you.
Nice work, Amanda, nice work. So you gotta bring this up with Ms. Coelho, the boss, right there, don't forget, okay? But, no, that's good, really, keep those ideas coming, and it makes a lot of sense, and, all right, so-
I just had one-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I could just add, add one more, the, on Thursday night, there's the Jazz and Show Choir Concert at New Bedford High School, I believe, Ms. Coelho?
It's Thursday.
Is that this Thursday, still, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure-
Fifteenth, is that-
What time does it start?
The fifteenth, at seven PM.
Seven?
Yep. So, you know, again, I mean, I'm a huge proponent for, you know, arts and music, so please come out, support the kids, you know, they deserve to have a lot of support and a big audience observing what they've been working so hard for.
Yep, one more, one more thing to add, in the same vein, so if memory serves me, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Coelho, so Durfee Basketball's coming here Friday night, the greatest basketball rivalry in Massachusetts, without, hands down, all apologies to all those schools in the Boston area, there's nothing like New Bedford-Durfee basketball games, and they're, both teams are having good seasons, and they had a spirited match at Durfee last time, we all know, and I think this will be another intense game, so it's good stuff, so come on out and, and watch them, seven o'clock on Friday night. Okay. So with all that, we have item seven A, requests for out-of-state field trips, could I get a motion to approve both of those?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have requests for out-of-state travel, which are listed in your agenda, I won't go through them.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yep.
What requirements, if any, are placed on people that go to these conferences when they return?
Yeah, so part of the-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So part of that is that you have to report back to their building principal, what they've learned, those lessons learned, and then they're integrated into professional development, with the appropriate colleagues.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on that at another time, about how it's integrated. All right, thank you.
Okay, so you had a motion and a second, any further, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven C, requests for approval to declare certain property, located at Parab and the Gomes School as surplus.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven D, we already took care of out of order, that concerns CLAB, and then executive session, can I get a motion to approve our adjourning to executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, that, things that are coming up, because MCAS is coming up, and I've been asked by some parents-
Wait a minute, we're, we're, we're taking up executive session right now.
I'd like to bring up some new business.
There's no new business on the agenda.
I'd like to ask a question, since I'm not allowed to ask questions outside the school committee.
That's not on the agenda, and that's, we follow the agenda.
Well, then I'm gonna ask that you put this on the agenda for the next full committee meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Which is whether the city is going to be following the survey and the MCAS this spring, and what's going on with the opioid screening of students.
Okay. So executive session, for the purposes listed in the agenda, to discuss strategies with respect to negotiations with the NBEA, and with the paraprofessionals, and, as well as with respect to security, can I get a motion?
So move.
Okay. Second, I think we have to take a roll.
Is it to return?
Yeah, and we will return, yep.
Mr. John Olivera?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jack Libramento?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Olivera?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Ameral?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen DeWicky?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, well, we will return to open session after we are done, to take up item seven E, for those of you who aren't sticking around, the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is March twelfth at six, and then there's a special budget meeting on the twenty-sixth of February, both at six o'clock, both here at Keith. All right, thank you, everybody. Go ahead, take the motion.
Make a motion, we return to regular session.
Second.
Okay, I think we have to take a roll there.
Mr. John Olivera?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffy Libramento?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Olivera?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Ameral?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen DeWicky?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, okay, so, Ms. Embley, we have a couple of matters to take up concerning item seven E in the agenda, which is, I'll just read it, consideration of the ratification of a memorandum of agreement between the New Bedford School Committee and the New Bedford Federation of Paraprofessionals to reflect the new contract book structure. That's a mouthful, can you explain?
Yes, I can. The six-page memorandum of agreement contains housekeeping changes, including the change of page numbers, we've created, make sure there's consistency with the numbering and lettering of paragraphs and sub-paragraphs, and consistency with what is underlied within the contract. That is it. There's no substantial changes in the MOA.
Okay, and so we would, to ratify this, we'd need a motion from the committee.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Embley, we can't hear you above, above the noisy crowd here.
They're lucky they're cute.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to ratify the agreement as presented, can we take a roll on that?
Mr. John Olivera?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffy Libramento?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Olivera?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Ameral?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen DeWicky?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay, and then there's a second related matter?
There, there is a second related matter, the other document for approval is the consolidated integrated paraprofessional collective bargaining agreement. This full agreement contains all of the contractual changes that were agreed to on a previous memorandum of agreement, or the contract ratified, as well as the six pages of housekeeping changes that the committee just approved.
The motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Okay, can we, any further discussion? Hearing none, we get a roll on that?
Mr. John Olivera?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jack Libramento?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Olivera?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Ameral?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen DeWicky?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.